Alright, I am back guys. Yeah, thanks for your patience. We're gonna go over a recap of the Thornton Township meeting that just happened. It was a special meeting. Again, all they voted on was the insurance. You know, I guess selecting which insurance brokers they were going to use for various, I think it was four insurance policies. So lots of distractions, no answers to any questions. And well, a mix, I would say of silence and distractions, especially at the end when two people try to start a fight with me. Hey Wyoming, welcome back. And I apologize because some of the... I lost. I think some of the, like it paused or something like unfortunately, I don't even know if it caught my public comment. I'm so bummed. I hope, I hope the Lansing Journal got it. Maybe I can use some of their video or ask them. So, hey Jabar, hey Wyoming, good evening, good evening. So yeah, let's see, hopefully it caught stuff. How are these insurance policies different from the ones voted when Stephanie Weideman was there? Good question. I don't know, just because the board, as far as I can tell, didn't get any information. Now that was one of the things that I wanted to ask Stephanie Weideman because she was there tonight. And then that's why I was very, very not happy about how they handled. Not only did Anita Graham and her male friend try to start fights with me, but they, the security guard was basically like, okay, well, yeah, you should probably go. Like, I'm like, me? I, I don't, I don't want to talk to them. I didn't approach them. Like they're trying to start stuff with me. So yeah, I was not able to talk to Stephanie because they were trying to cause, I don't know, distractions or something probably. Oops. Max Group or something with Max Insurance. So, you know, a lot of questions here. So of course we have a lot of questions with that. We know Napoleon was asked to step down from his position. Thanks for joining. This is the special Thornton Township meeting tonight. All they're voting on is awarding insurance contracts. So of course we have a lot of questions with that. We know Napoleon was asked to step down from his position at the state level overseeing insurance regulation. And he also has connections, I believe some sort of ownership connections to Max, Max Group or something with Max Insurance. So, you know, a lot of questions here. Why did they not vote at this, at last week's meeting? And does anyone on the board have connections to these insurance companies? So. Thanks for joining us and we'll be starting here in a few minutes, I would imagine. We're barely anybody here yet. Okay, let me. So it was even a smaller turnout than last week's meeting. And again, this, this was on last week meetings, last week's meetings agenda. And they've tabled it. So like, what is so special? You call a special meeting to vote on four insurance policies? Just very weird. Very weird. Aha, is this where it starts to get weird? Reception? Anyway. Now, even if you notice, not during the meeting, not anything regarding township business, but even before. You have, I think this is trustee Antoine Russell, highway commissioner, Antoine Russell, trustee Chris Gonzalez and trustee Valerie Stubbs. They're very animated, talking, they have lots to say. And you know, once that meeting starts, anything related to official township business, they have nothing to say. And like I said, they, they were, I will, will never forget how loud they, and persistent they were. Asking all sorts of questions. Where's the money going? What are you doing? Blah, 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 blah. Unasked that seat. Remember when Tiffany was in and now they say nothing. And tonight I get harassed and they also say nothing. I just wanted to point that out though. Okay, and then Mary Bond comes in. Okay, I know Beth is there. I think this is the lawyer off to the right talking. Here's the agenda. Again, it's pretty short and then they had, they were supposed to vote on this insurance. The full, it looks like four insurance policies. We're supposed to vote on them last time. And they decided to table them and they called a special meeting for it. So. I mean, I'm wondering why they would do that. So yeah, that's it. Should be a short meeting. Yeah, and I didn't realize. I guess the reception was already a little bit dicey, but. That's the lawyer right there, Steve Ledizinski. Hi, Deleon. Hey Beth. Supresor said the policies were not ready. Okay, I mean, could be, but again, like they're, we don't know what, if they're telling the truth or not because they never, they never show you anything. Sharon, I'm here in Elgin. Well, hello, welcome, welcome from Elgin. I was able to tell Stephanie in person that I would not be supporting her. Okay, yes, yes. And I saw Amir posted about it as well. I think it's fair. I mean. I think anybody that would like to support Stephanie, I'll put it that way. Anybody that would maybe even consider supporting Stephanie for the position of Thornton Township Democratic Committee man. Okay, because that's the race next year for 2026. It's between her, the primaries between her and, or the race, I'm sorry, because it's for a democratic position. So there's only one election. It's between her and Napoleon. I think a big point of contention is that if people want to support Stephanie, that people would like to see her coming out and saying that she does not support Jedediah Brown. She is not working with him. She's not backing his organization or his group that he calls INA that has been consistently working for various politicians and other groups, you know, to harass people and attack people. I mean, that's a big deal, right? Because you don't want, a lot of people are rightfully worried about having a person in an elected position who's, who not only supports Jedediah Brown and all of his terror and chaos that he causes, but, but actually works supposedly for him or with him in his organization. So that really is a big deal. I think that's a very, very big deal. Amir posted about it. And I mean, I can't, I can't blame them. Doesn't say that I still wouldn't talk to Stephanie and she knows a lot about the township, you know, because she worked there for so long and everything. But I mean, I think that's, it's, so it's more so. I hear concerns not about, about Stephanie herself, but just the association with Jedediah and INA, which, you know, are very, very toxic and harmful groups. So. Jabar says, do you mind telling us why Beth? She could step away from INA into the public. Oh, thank you, Beth. Right. That's exactly what I was thinking. Yes, yes. Jabar, she seems to be supporting INA. Right, right. Mm-hmm. Because remember, I mean, it's one thing to, if people try to dismiss all of the illegal and harmful things that Jed and his, and his supporters and his allies had done, right? Because they'll try to say, oh, well, you just don't like him, but you know, I get along with Jed and you know, we're friends or whatever. Oh, it's just something personal, you know? That's, I think is wrong and that's rude and that's problematic in and of itself, right? But it's a whole other thing when someone who actively supports Jed and his, all of the, the problems and terror and, you know, harassment that he does. And that they're going to be in an elected position. So, you know, if you want to run for, for a public position, people are going to look at things like that. It's legit. You can't hide from that. Alright. So yeah, Jabar, that's the same thing that I, Beth said the same thing that I was not gonna say. And that, that's what I've heard people thinking. And, and like I said, I totally, you know, see the point. Hey, On The Q, I still didn't get to watch your, I wanted to wa, I'm behind. I'm watching some of your Dalton videos on the queue. I can't keep up with everything between work. And covering local meetings. And fighting all these, these asshole politicians and the people that work for them. But that's okay, you know, it's worth it, right? If we want to have good communities, it takes work and we all have to stick together. I was disappointed that more people were not at this meeting tonight, but you know. I know people can't make every meeting. The issue with Jed is beyond friendships right now. Exactly, Beth. Exactly, exactly. On The Q says, no worries. Take your time. But yes, I just wanted to let you know that On The Q because several people have been recommending them to me lately. So I'm like, what is this girl doing? Like. She must be really getting some in-depth research going on that I, I, I want to see because you know, I love that kind of stuff. And I need to, I need to put my Patreon link up, you guys. I, I love this kind of work. I know On The Q loves it, but you know, please share our stuff, like our stuff, like we, we, you know, we do need support. And just because there are people like Jed that steal, that lie and steal people's money, like that doesn't mean that there aren't actually real people out there. Like me and others and On The Q and Amir, you know, that actually are, like, we really do want to uncover the truth for people as far as what goes on in our communities. And we want to see our communities do better. So don't be afraid, you know, give us money, you know, donate, do what you can, volunteer. Like I said, I gotta link my Patreon. I was trying to set it up yesterday. That's like a monthly thing if people want to support your work, but also don't be shy of telling me and others, like. Not only, I think, would it be nice for some of us if we could get some, some support, so this is not all volunteer, but also feedback to say, okay. Yeah, we would love to have sponsors, but also what do you guys want to see? And do you want to see more interviews with local politicians, with local leaders? Do you want to see more, more content videos about certain issues? You know, just let, let us know. But I think, I think it's really important. We need this local coverage because it's just, it's hard to find, you know? People are tired of this bullshit. Exactly, On The Q. Exactly, yep. Just look like they're having a grand old time. Not a care in the world while people are getting taxed out of their homes. Okay, they're chatting, chit chat, chit chat. This is Casey Nesbit, she's the clerk. There's Napoleon. He comes out. I don't know who that is. I think she's, I, this young lady, I think she's just one of the township employees. And then this is Byron Stan, Stanley, I believe, yeah. Sorry, you know, they put us so far back. It's like we all have, we all have, you know, cooties or, or, you know, failed illness or something. Not too many people. I think this young lady was with Stephanie Weideman. There's a security guard here. Three ladies with the Lansing Journal. Oops, wanted to show, I think, so Ms. Nina Graham. Oh, there's Stephanie Weideman, Nina Graham. I forget, what is her name? Janelle? But she's a lady that I totally agree, agree with. She, she had a cool sign tonight too. Saying something like, you know, let, let us sit closer. And she has complained about that a few times where, you know, people, we, we feel like we're so far away from them, from the board. Here, it's pretty quiet this evening. And then that, that older white gentleman that he's, I think he works for the township. I always see him there. I forget. I know I've seen that lady, maybe, I think they're both township employees and then that's Beth. Very, also some very critical questions. Supervisor is here in person tonight. Oh Lord, and I do not want to hear any of these people praying because you need to stop praying, you need to start doing the right thing. Lansing Journal has a new reporter by the name of Meredith. Oh, thank you, Beth, because I did meet her and I forgot her name. Yes, so Meredith was there. She was the lady with the, and she had her camera on her. They are.
Okay, that should, that should be better. Can you hear him? Okay, good evening. Yeah, I just had a few questions. I know that these, the items on the agenda that were in the last meeting, I was just curious why they were tabled. And the special meeting call, basically why are the insurance policies so important? Also, which insurance brokers were chosen and how they were selected? And do any of the board members have a stake in any of these insurance companies? I think it's very important to clarify, especially given the the controversy regarding insurance that, you know, that has been reported on where supervisor was serving on regulatory, regulatory board. And then was found to have some conflicts of interest and ownership stake in insurance companies. So I think that would be very important to clarify for the township. Also, the real, the real estate tax rate for next year, what is it? Is it, is it zero or are the taxes going up like zero percent? I know the supervisor just said something like, well, they're not going up, but you know, if they've gone up every year by two percent. And, you know, a lot of boards will just say, oh, it's not changing, but your taxes are still going up. They're just going up at the same percentage rate. So, I think that clarified. The Mr. Ledizinski, I did read all the reports you mentioned on the website, but they're not really the financial reports to the township. They're not really audits. They're just basically regurgitation about the township staff, press report. A lot of it was just stuff from, even from back from the supervisor. We really need that for a forensic audit. And I did ask around, but I mean, no one I could find, whether they work with the federal government or not, had any, any reason to think that just because of federal investigation going on, that you couldn't easily find a company to do a forensic audit. So I mean, that really really needs to be done. The other thing was just, I even talked about coming to the meetings tonight and I said, oh, I'm selling my work clothes because I'm all, you know, I got my pain on me and I got patches on my pants, you can even see.
Oh, is that when I was gonna say? At some point, I know that I think the reception goes out. So pissed about that.
Especially these property taxes. And last time I just didn't see any sense of urgency from the board. We know that you're paying. This is what we're doing to make cuts. This is what we're doing. We want to lower your taxes or at least have, you know, zero percent tax rate increase. We're patching our clothes, you know, either literally or figuratively. We're pinching our pennies. We really need help from.
I suggest, and this person, no, I'm talking.
Oh, so anyway, hey, at least it caught more than I thought it did. So that's good. That's good. That's good. But yeah, basically, I was just, it caught most of my comments. And at the end there, you know, I was thinking before the meeting, I was like, because I had, I had done paint, some painting today. Some outside work. And so I thought, oh, okay, well, maybe I'll put some nicer clothes on. And I said, you know, no, I'm gonna leave my work clothes on because the people of this township are working their asses off just to try, you know, two and three jobs, just to afford their property taxes. And this board, which is a public board, no, do they control all of our property taxes? No. But they have no sense of urgency. They don't answer any questions. And the last meeting, neither the last meeting nor this meeting, did they respond, saying anything about as far as what the new tax rate is going to be for 2026 on us. And they didn't say what kind of cuts they were making or what sort of efficiencies they were putting in place or whatever they were doing to, to you know, try to bring our crazy tax levels down. They're out of touch. People, like I said, I mean. People have to choose between paying their property taxes and paying their health insurance. Paying their property taxes and keeping their home and paying for food, water, utilities. They may have to choose between, you know, paying for their property taxes or paying for childcare. And this, this is a crisis that we are in, not just in the Southland, but you know, especially in the Southland. We're hit very hard. And this board, like many boards. They're just up there laughing and teeing, having, you know, a little, little parties amongst themselves and it's just a total disrespect for, for the taxpayers and, and everything, all the resources that we give them. And they just kind of seem to just do whatever they want. And there's, there's just no sense of urgency. There's no, there's no. Yeah, there's no sense of urgency. There's no response. There's nothing. The oversize a lot of tax money. They do, right? And like I said, I know, hey, I know the schools take most of our tax money. Okay. So really the school boards are the ones we really should be grilling. To make sure that they're using every dollar as efficiently as possible, right? Especially with the federal, the cuts in federal funding. But still, the township, you know, does take of our taxes. So at least try, at least make an effort. We hear you. Okay, so your tax rate next year, this year it was, you know, 2.7%. Next year it's going to be 3.5. Oh, it went up. Okay, why did it go up? Oh, was that, you know, so Napoleon could get his, you know, 200,000 plus a year salary? You know, where, where's all this money going? You know, or what about that 20 some thousand office rehab that they did for Antoine Russell, the highway commissioner? You know, like, was that a good use of our tax dollars when people are getting taxed out of their homes? So that's the kind of stuff, you know, that I'm, was saying. Oh, and then at the end with the clothes though, I said, no, I'm gonna leave my clothes, I'm gonna leave my work clothes on. And I showed him my patch, you know, and I said, look, I have some patches. You know, my butt, you know, where your work pants will tend to rip or whatever. And I said, I wore them on purpose because the people, you know, are, are, we're working hard. We're patching our clothes, literally and figuratively. We're pinching our pennies. We're, we're doing what we can just to survive. What is this board doing? That's my question. What is this board doing? What are they doing with all of the, the resources, all the money that we give them? They're supposed to be our public servants. Are they? I mean. Ever since they've been sworn in, we don't get, I feel like we got more things, more questions answered under Tiffany Henniger being supervisor, seriously. You know, and, and that says a lot because she wasn't transparent either. But I mean, this is just, it's, 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 it's really bad. They're really making a case for why we should disband this township. So then it cut out a little bit and then Ms. Nina Graham comes up, she gets her public comment. Now, a little background. She is, I think, like, she was a teacher of Napoleon Harris, the supervisor, and Napoleon calls her, you know, considers her like a mentor, mother figure, et cetera, et cetera. You know, all that's well and good. That's fine. She's also president of the District 205 School Board, which is huge because I'll tell you what, they take a ton of our tax money. So if anything, she, she has a lot to answer for because she's the president of the school board for three large high schools, Thornton, Thorn Ridge and Thornwood. So she always comes up at the meetings and says, you know, like, oh, why are people, you know, just talks for Napoleon, talks up the board, you know, why are people complaining? This board's so wonderful and people are, shouldn't be negative and it's horrible. They should be keeping praises on you, you know? It's just, it's kind of like, after a while, you just don't even hear it because it's like, okay, she's always saying the same stuff, right? So this week she comes up and she starts attacking me. Now, she had approached me with her, her male acquaintance or friend or this gentleman who's with her that I don't know. After the meeting last week and she was trying to talk to me and ask me some questions, but but she quickly got very belligerent. And I was like, you know, this board is not being responsible with how they're spending the money. And she said, it's Trump's fault. You can't blame Napoleon. It's Trump's fault. And she just got very angry and I just walked away. You know, I was like, okay, I don't know what the deal is. But then she comes in public comment tonight and was like, well, he was talking about black people and then, and he's being racist. So it's, it definitely looks like some sort of setup where they were saying, hey, you know, Ryan's asking quite too many questions. Go, you know, go, go call them racist. Go do something to distract, right?
You need to go sit down with Cassandra Holm.
And she was trying to bring the, the Lansing Journal in. And I think, I think the Lansing Journal, you know, lady is for, you know, they're like, no, 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 we, and I don't blame them, right? They're like, look, we don't want to get involved. We're not trying to be witness to that. Not what I said. That's it. And so I had to clarify right then and there. That's not what I said. I did not say anything racist. And, and I don't know why she's trying to start this controversy, but obviously it's a distraction from how they're spending the money. Incorrect. And then the clerk has the nerve, Casey Nesbit, who sits on board, school board 152, who also wastes money. Doesn't listen to teachers or staff or residents and it, and has like no accountability. And then she has the nerve to tell me like, don't interrupt, don't interrupt. Sure, because I'm sure y'all set this up ahead of time.
You need to be quiet. Because I got a question to ask you.
Oh, oh, and I need to be quiet. Again, what does this have to do with township business? We're here for township business, not to try to start sideshow fights and arguments and distractions. How is she get, you're not gonna embarrass me because I didn't say anything that I'm embarrassed by or ashamed of, or I don't know what she's talking about. But again, it's all distraction with a capital D, okay? So I got a big D for you tonight. And it's not that D. It's, 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 it's called a distraction. That's the big D, okay? Yep, sorry, just kind of. Sorry, just kind of, my internet was a little slow. Yeah, Jabar said this lady sounds highly prejudiced. It was just out of the blue, you know? And then it gets worse. So that was just the start of it. Watch. Okay. So did he say Alliance was the name of the insurer? Cause remember they, they went right to voting on the insurance policies. They answered no questions. This board, all these boards, but you know, they are full of, of nothing but excuses and, and shit. Did he say Alliant? All right, please give her, oh, an F. Yeah. Well, and she used to be a, a teacher. Okay? This lady was supposedly Napoleon Harris's teacher. She was a school teacher. She's president of the school board, three large high schools. She is president. And you just go because your little protege or whatever Napoleon is to her is not honest with the public about how we're spending public funds? And so then you, you become the elderly woman attack dog to go after people who are asking questions and covering public meetings? And you want to start fights with them? Like what kind of, what kind of teacher is that? What kind of role model? That's horrible. Jabar was unsettling. Yeah, very, very much so. You know, it's, it's, it's not like she's just some random person. Like she is president of the school board for three large high schools like that. She shouldn't be in that position. Especially not, not doing things like, like, you know, making up excuses for this, this township board that does nothing good. Bye-bye. But yeah, can you guys hear what he's saying? Did he say Alliant? As far as the name of the insurance company? Let me know what you think he's saying. So is it Alliance? I'm gonna look it up. Maybe is that, is that a company, insurance company, you guys?
The insurance policies that we have currently on file, when we, we took over on May 19th, the same coverages that was hit, that was held here prior to, uh, the reason why they went on the last weeks, uh, what we, they do because they were not finalized. I wanted to make sure that we had those things finalized.
So he said they were the same policies that they had. Okay. But that's the first I had heard of that. He said the reason why they didn't vote them last week because they weren't finalized. Oops, 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 oops. I'm so sorry. So he says his insurance company does not cover the township. Okay? So fact checkers on the queue, everybody else, you heard that. So go, we have to check that out. Is this true? So the supervisor says his insurance company does not cover the township. I thought that they had been insuring some of the township events this year, but we can, we'll have to, to find that out. Oh, I lied or insinuated? No, I asked. I didn't lie or insinuate. I asked. And the controversy is true. I'll pull that article up in a second. So what'd he say, some 14? It was a really fast meeting. Yeah. All right. So then, so they got that. They all are super happy. So I'm like, is someone getting paid or something off these insurance policy? I don't know why they're all so happy, giddy. Okay. So you can kind of hear, so the elderly gentleman that was with Ms. Nina Graham, you can kind of hear that he's talking to me. And for some reason he was trying to say again, you know, oh, you were saying racist thing. It was like he was trying to start some sort of argument and I just was, you know, not interested. I'm like, I'm sorry, I'm not, we, we don't, we should not, we don't need to be having this conversation. Cause I don't even know him. You know, again, don't be harassing me. Go harass the board. Go harass your buddy Napoleon Harris, who's hiding what he's doing. And so if you hear, I can, I asked him, I said, what, why are you defending the improper actions of this board? You know, again, uh, cause he was trying to, I guess, make some sort of personal argument like, no, no, that's not what's going on here. And I'm not gonna, you know, play into that. And then he said he's not talking about that. Like, well, okay. So sir, why are you speaking with me? I'm, I'm, this conversation because I didn't say that. Would you, we can identify you on camera though. This gentleman is harassing me. Do not, okay. So he's the guy. This is the guy that was talking to me. I should have just started filming him right away. I don't even know who he is. Harass me. Okay. All right. All right. Thank you. Thank you, sir. Yeah. Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry. The damn reception again. I don't know what was going on. So again, and I'm just packing up. Ms. Nina Graham here is in the, in the colored hat. And she eventually comes over. I want to see how much of the, this, the video catches. If you want to talk, now it's gonna have to be on, on the live because I don't. Oh, okay. So, so that was, um, Ms. Graham was saying something like, oh, I want to talk with you. I want to talk with you. And so you heard, I'll, I'll replay that again. But you heard my response. And I said, well, if you do want to talk, it's gonna have to be on the live because you lied about what I said last week. So now I don't trust you. You know, it's like, I'm not, what do you think? I'm going to have private conversations with someone who lies about me and says I'm being racist when I'm not like, that's ridiculous. And she should know better. So shame on Ms. Graham for that. She is head of, again, she's president of the school board with our three local large high schools. And you're going around accusing falsely, accusing someone calling, calling people racist because they dare ask questions about how your protege, uh, Napoleon Harris spends money? That's not appropriate. It's, it's, it's very, very inappropriate. Sorry, I missed the first part of your recap. Okay, that's all right, Paul. Yeah. So the meeting was there. So in her co, her public comment, that was, you know, Ms. Harris was very inappropriate. Not Ms. Harris, um, Ms. Graham, you know, Graham. Uh, but this was after the meeting. So you just missed the gentleman friend of hers or whoever the guy is. I don't know who he is. So he tries to come up to me and start a fight. And I just said, I'm, I'm not interested in having this conversation. I turned the camera on him. I said, here, do you want to be on camera? Because I want all this document. And then of course he's like, don't show me on camera. So eventually he walks away, which is good. But then Nina Graham starts up with me. What up? Hey, Cook. Help versus, no, I didn't even, I didn't even have time to ask because you know what? They didn't answer any question. They didn't answer any question I asked anyway. Do you think, they don't give a rat's ass. This board is fucking corrupt as fuck. I was sitting here with the attorney told Carol of Lansing Journal, it looks like she's the only resident who approached their table after the meeting. Oh, yeah, yeah. Yeah. They seem to be relatively nice to the ladies. Probably they want to keep them on their, on, on, you know, try to keep them happy so that they, they don't write up anything negative about the board, I would imagine. But yeah, I don't know. We'll see what she writes up. But yeah, let me go back just a teens. Let's see if it catch what. Okay. So here's Ms. Graham comes. And here's the security guard. I noticed. And this is okay. Okay. He's monitoring her, but then it ends up turning into where he, he, he stays near me. I'm like, why are you here though? Like, I don't, I mean, I appreciate if it's like for protection, but like, I shouldn't be the one that you're like trying to say should leave. Like, go tell Ms. Graham and her, her bully male friend of hers. You know what I mean? Like, I'm not doing anything. I'm not doing anything that I'm not supposed to. If you want to talk, now it's gonna have to be on, on the live because I don't, since you're lying about what I said, I don't trust you anymore. Okay. So then her, her male acquaintance comes back and walking towards her. And again, I'm just filming. I'm starting to pack up. Right, exactly. And that's like, there's too many people, too many issues, something. I'm like, yeah. I'm like, I don't know what's going on. They're trying to start stuff. To figure out where our money is going with this board. Oh, there's Stephanie. Yeah. See, I wanted to, I did want to ask her a few questions, particularly about the insurance, but, it seems like she was trying to tell this guy who was trying to start a fight with me too, trying to tell him something like, I, I don't know, maybe to try to calm him down. So I don't, again, I don't know him. Why is Napoleon and this board, why are they allowing people like Ms. Graham and her friend to antagonize people who are asking questions and I'm not talking to them? I don't associate with them. Like what, what the hell are they doing? It's, it's just more intimidation. Private conversations. People that, that lie about me. That is definitely not going to happen here. Yeah. Can you believe that? So you get up, lie, call me a racist, lie about what I said, and then say, oh, I want to have a private conversation with you. No, ma'am. You lie about me? I don't have anything to say to you. Why are you lying about people? What is this board so desperate to hide? That's what I want to know. Cause I'm not the only one asking the questions. So don't, don't single me out. Don't come after me saying I'm the only one or I'm causing trouble, whatever. No. They, this board, you know, you know, you all have been hiding information for months. Mary Avant, Valerie Stubbs, Chris Gonzalez, especially. You guys were so loud when Tiffany was in there and you wanted to know everything, what was going on. You wanted that forensic audit. We still don't have the forensic audit. And you have nothing to say. All you do is say yes. You're yes men, just like the four aldermen here in Harvey that they do with Chris Clark. That's what you do with Napoleon. Yeah, we're fine. I'm, we're fine, sir. We're good. And again. Actually, I, I was gonna talk to the, um, the journalists, the other journalists. Yeah. I want to talk to the ladies of the Lansing Journal. You know, it's like, why are you bugging me? Go tell, um, the instigators to leave. Don't tell me to leave. The nerve of these people. We're just, oh, wait till they get the card. Oh, good, Cook. Good. Yeah. Well, I might have to depending on, I don't know if they're gonna try to start something again, but. Intimidation tactics enabled by the dot. Yep. Exactly. Because they all know what's going on the whole time. Now, could you imagine if that were someone that, that was, that was, um, you know, trying to harass Ms. Graham or a supporter of Napoleon of the board? They'd be like, oh, 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 you, you know, you gotta leave, you gotta leave. But somebody comes after a citizen that is critical or has a question about the board. And they're all just like, oh yeah, wink, wink, laugh, laugh. You can do whatever the fuck you want. It's just sad that they have to try to create, um, distractions so that they don't actually have a problem about where our money is going. Attraction and diversion. So that's what it's about, man. Hey guys. Oh yeah. I told you no apologies. It was gonna be very short. She said she was on her way. Ramona. No apology said she was on her way. I told her it was gonna be short. No apologies. Never made it. She was gonna come, but she never made it. It was. Wait for the Lansing Journal's recording to hear. Oh, I'm sorry, Paul. Yeah. I think, I think I got most of it, but some of it, the reception, I don't know what happened. I apologize. I think most of it went through though. Yeah. Yeah. But yeah, the Lansing Journal, they did record too. So. So at least that's good. And I'm just keeping my recording rolling because for some reason Ms. Graham and the gentleman that was.
So at least that's good. And I'm just keeping my recording rolling because for some reason, Ms. Graham and the gentleman that was, is with her was, they're trying to create some drama with me or say something that I said something racist, which I did not. Just, you know, typical distracting, distraction stuff. Oh, no, I just want to talk to the Lansing Journal, but, but that's fine. I mean, they'll.
So again, I'm waiting because I'm a member of the public. I can speak with whoever I want. Like, why are you on top of me, Mr. Security Guard? Like, I have to go. Like, if you're worried, go get Ms. Graham and her buddies.
They'll be coming out eventually. I Oh, yeah, no, I, I'm not going to have the conversation because they obviously want to start something. And I'm like, I don't even know who you are.
Yeah, I don't even know the guy. Don't care to know him either. Not when you treat someone like that. Oh, this is cute. Did you see the lady's sign?
Oh, that's so good.
Oh, wait, wait, did it come out?
You had the great comments about that. Thank you.
Reception was not, not that good. And you see that guy as he's walking by, he's still eyeing me. Eyeing me. Take him the fuck out of there. Don't tell me I have to leave. I understood Tiffany's goons Kamal, Craig Lee, Michael Smith, Keith Chris, that are much better than Napoleon's goons, Nina Graham, Carla Burris, Anton Russell, and new all planes, security guards. Right, 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 exactly. I feel like at least they were, like with Tiffany, I feel like you, you, you at least it was a little more direct, like you knew kind of what she was after, even if you disagreed, or maybe you thought it was, it was bad or whatever. But yeah, these guys, they're, they're trying to be more subtle, but it's no less, uh, insidious and intimidate, and you know, intimidating and just inappropriate. You're a member of the press and a citizen of the township. Thank you, Cook. That's what I was trying to say. So this dude, I'm like, why are you hovering near me? Like, I can talk to whoever I want. So let's see if this lady's sign came out. It was really good. It said something like, why are you so far or something?
It's awesome.
Darn it, it didn't come out, the reception. Shoot. But yeah, it was very clever. It was something about like, um, you know, board members, why are you so far? So you know, talking about that big gap that's between the audience, the public and the board. And it's funny because it's the same behavior. So remember how Tiffany's people and the employees, they would get all this preferential treatment and kissing ass and blah, 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 blah. So now Ms. Graham and her associate attacked me, a member of the press and the public, you know, and a resident. And a member, just a member of the public. And, um, not only do they not get put out, but they get, they get preferential treatment. So yeah, I'm just watching. Can't make this up.
Sure, no one's, uh, we're all gonna get out safely. No one's gonna cause any issue.
So here is, uh, that's trustee Stubbs. And then I think there was trustee Stanley who was talking to Ramona. Oh, here's the new lady with the, the, um, I forgot her name already. Meredith, was it, with the, the Lansing Journal? If anything, I wanted to talk to her because I talked to her a little bit before.
I'm glad you caught that. I was able to catch her sign. That's awesome. Cause I do, I think I, I think I was at that meeting where she made the public comment about that. And then, um, Paul commented your, your photo or something, the, uh, photo on that art, one article. And it was true because it accurately depicted just how like far away that you feel, you know?
Yeah.
When you're sitting there.
I really do.
Yeah, so. So I.
So again, security guard with a gun, you know, is by me. I'm so dangerous, a reporter. I'm so dangerous. Like, go to the elderly lady and her elderly gentleman friend who are bullying me. Like, leave me alone, dude.
I agreed with that, that sentiment. Yeah, I wonder, are they supposed to have a December meeting? That'd be the last one.
So the guy that just walked by in the suit, that's Steve Ledezinski. So he is the lawyer. So you know, he also knows everything that's going on. Uh, Janelle, oh, okay. So her name is Janelle. Thank you, Paul. Janelle Taylor signs say, yeah, I'm sorry, my, um, you'll see it come out in the Lansing Journal because Carol took a picture of it. But it was really cute. It, it didn't come out in, in my feed, uh, for some reason, but it was something like, you know, trustees, why are you so far away or something? But it was really cute. It was very cute. Yeah. And hey, no apologies, guard, you're supposed to come to this meeting. You missed it. But it was, it was, it was very short. So. Yeah. But you missed the, you missed the, um, how these two people are trying to start a fight with, with me. Crazy.
Thank you, you too. Or one more, last one, I guess.
And then Ms. Stubbs has the nerve to check on Beth to see if she's okay. Maybe she's not okay because she's tired of you all bullying people that ask questions about government. You know, did you ever think of that? Maybe Beth's not okay because of that, Ms. Stubbs and the other trustees. Maybe you all ought to try not hiding things from the public, you know? Or don't take a public position if you can't ask, if you can't answer questions. It's just like, not only do they fuck you, but then they're like, oh, are you okay sweetheart? You know, they're like gonna check on you while they're fucking you over. Like, get the fuck out of here.
Are you, are you waiting? Oh, yeah, yeah. Thank you, you too.
Beth was, she's very sweet. I'm, I'm sure she was concerned for my safety. So yes, I did make it out safe, okay. But even just leaving the door, like here's Ms. Graham again, taking her sweet time with, with her, uh, you know, her a companion, the other gentleman that I don't know. And, you know, it's, it's, it's like they, they were deliberately wanting or trying to start a, a fight or a conflict. You know, it's like, I'm not interested in talking to you. I'm not here for you. I wanted to maybe speak with some other people there and not be rushed off by the fucking security guard that I pay his salary and, and we all pay his salary. Uh, but it was just was really, they obviously wanted to start a fight.
Thank you.
Just watch. And I'm like waiting as they're, as they're like, you know, moving at a snail's pace. I'm like, okay, I'm trying to, to, to walk by, but you know, not be too close. So there's, there's, um, I think that's Mary Avant. I've lost track of who this is. And then one of these cars is Ms. Nina, uh, Ms. Graham. But again, they're all just kiki-ing, having a great old time. Woo hoo. Taxes are going up at the township. We're gonna take some trips out of town. We're getting paid. Uh, you know, we're having a great, a grand old time, um. Uh, Ms. Graham and her buddies harassing Ryan. So he wanna, uh, he wanna ask questions. Like, this is all fun. It's, it's like all fun and games to them. Oh, yeah, that's okay. No apologies. That's fine. Yeah, it was short.
Okay.
You need to go in the car. You can't stay here long. This is not the time, Ryan. You need to go in the car.
I just wanted to ask them a question.
No, it's not the day. It's really not.
Well, you think they're gonna start something?
No, I think that you should quietly. Wanna be okay later and you're gonna have more opportunities to take the time.
No, 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 I don't want to talk to that. I'm talking, talking about that. Okay, alright.
And Beth was, they're so petty. She was worried. She had good intentions. The security guard, no. It's like, you know better. Again, don't, if you're worried about a conflict, you go escort out the person who is trying to start a conflict. Like I said, I, I have nothing to do with Ms. Graham or the person that she was with. Yeah, no apologies. I wish you were there to see that in person and get it on film. So we would have had a separate, that, that's the one thing I would have liked. To have a separate, you know, uh, uh, depiction of that. Um. First of all, I don't have to explain myself. If I'm in a public setting like that, I can do whatever I want, as long as I'm not harassing anybody. But I did just want to, you know, talk to, um, to ask, you know, a few people questions, blah, blah, blah. Um, again, having nothing to do with the two people that were trying to start a fight with me. Um, and then Beth is, you know, she's, she's well meaning. I know she's, she's not um, being hostile, but she just doesn't want to, to have conflict, which I understand because these people allow, they encourage conflict. The board is totally a hundred percent guilty. Um, and, and they, they, who knows, they could have arranged all this ahead of time. It's very possible. But, um, like, leave me alone, man.
Well, that's a shame because you know, the last time that I was here, there were actually two men that followed me to my car after the meeting. And I didn't do anything. I'm just here to cover. So just so you know, is the security guard now, um, or, right, right. Yeah. And you know, I'm a member of the public. I should be protected. Anybody should be protected. I shouldn't have to feel endangered or come to a meeting. I'm not doing anything wrong. You know? Well, I'm just saying, last time, two men.
They would take the bigger person. The bigger person who's not doing anything wrong is a journalist and a resident. And I should leave because that's being the bigger person. No, you do your job and the board does its fucking job and stop harassing the public.
And, did you hear me? Two men. And I didn't say anything. So now this is the second time and two people are gonna come and try to start a fight with me. So now, this is on you guys because I didn't do anything wrong. So I, I appreciate you, you're trying to keep the peace. Thank you. But you know what I mean? I'm just saying, like, now that you know, because I said, oh, that was unsafe and uncalled for and extremely rude and illegal. But I said, okay, well, I'll let it go this time because, um, you know, who knows what, what was up. But now, yeah. No, because. Yeah, I, I, I don't deal with that. I shouldn't have to be intimidated at any public meeting.
No public meeting. You shouldn't, I should not have to worry about that.
Okay, good, good. Well, yeah, I guess I'll just have to call them. I wanted to ask them a few things.
And the whole time, like I said, they're, the whole time, the board, while the security guard is trying to get me to leave, member of the public, the board is over there giggling, kiki-ing and babying the two bullies that were trying to start a fight. These two elderly people. How shameful. Ms. Graham and, and her elderly gentleman friend, like, wow, shouldn't you be in summer, enjoying your retirement? Why are you, why are you bullying people on, on, uh, behalf of this board? And the board members are encouraging it.
Oh, here, see, yeah, Paul comments too. Yep. We pay for private security. Oh, he says to keep residents from asking sensitive questions. Well, I mean, he's, he is trying to keep the peace, but yeah, I, I hear you, Paul. Yeah, it's just a shame that normal citizens should have to feel afraid at their own, or have to be chased out of their own public meetings. But at least you all can see that. Yeah, very sad. Very sad. Very sad. They don't want anybody asking questions because where's the money going? That's the real question. Where's all the money going?
Right. That's what we should know. That's our right to know that. Look, look at this. Look at this guy. What an ass. And you can't just say, oh, I'm just following orders. You know what? Then get a new job. If your orders are, it's just like with the ICE people, right? Like, if you're, if your orders are unlawful orders, they're hurting people. Like, dude, you have a brain. You know, I'm not the aggressor here. You know that Ms. Graham over here and her male friend who are laughing and giggling with the trustees, they caused the problem. So you say, hey, ma'am, you know, I really think you should leave. You know, you want to, you want to ask someone to leave? Ask them. You go after the aggressor, not the victim.
Okay, thank you. You too, yes.
I can't wait to leave. Okay, why are you bugging me? If you can't wait to leave, why don't you go talk to the, the, the trustees and the people causing the trouble? Anyway. So yeah, this went on and on.
Right. If anything, you should be going to the elderly lady and having her leave first. Because I didn't do anything wrong. Yeah, I, I shouldn't have to do anything. I'm actually a journalist here covering the meeting. Could you imagine, what if, what if you did the same thing to ABC Seven News? You said, oh, you have to go, bye, bye. Thanks for coming. I knew it would be a short one. But I'm just saying, that, that's, that is how improper this is. Imagine if it were someone from ABC Seven, you're saying, oh, sir, you have to leave because, um, two people are trying to tell lies and start drama and whatever about you. That's not my, that's not my problem. So you take the aggressors and you tell the aggressors to leave. And guess what? I'm not the aggressor. You don't tell the victim to leave. You go at the aggressor, right? So there are your aggressors right there. So you get them to leave. So then the victim is free to film. But that's okay. I just want to get this on video. You can get in Ramona if you don't want to deal with it. I, I understand. Oh, is it, if it's not open, just press the button. Yeah. You just press that button and you'll, it, it should open. Yeah, yeah. Cause it, it's fine. I just, but I, I just want to document this and how the things are mishandled. And like Paul said, we pay for private security. So people that ask questions about where the money is going can be intimidated. So, um, yeah, but Paul, basically, yeah, Ms. Graham was just trying to cause drama and saying that I said something racist, which I did not. And then the gentleman that was with her was saying some.
Anyway, so this is crazy. Sorry, let me just catch up with the comments here. Yeah, so you missed the, uh, you missed the, the, that juicy stuff. No apologies. But that's all right. There'll be more meetings, I'm sure. Jabar says, oh, you do realize that you're guardian angel for now and Ryan? Oh, you mean Beth? Yeah. No, no, like I said, even though, like, I was trying to tell Beth, like, hey, I, no, 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 I shouldn't have to leave. But yeah, like I said, she, she was, she just, you know, was doing it from a good place. She was just trying to, to, to be protective of me. Paul says, now I know why Lansing Journal reporters never make public comment or ask questions during board meetings. Exactly. Because then all of a sudden you get labeled, I guess, you know, public enemy, which is ridiculous. Cause I'm, I'm not gonna let that intimidate me and no one should. You know, these boards should work for us. And if you're asking questions about public finance, you should get them answered. You shouldn't get harassed because of it. Uh, Daniel Peterson. Oh, okay, we have a troll here. Um, okay, goodbye. Goodbye.
Anything similar? I don't even know who he is.
So if you, do you see him in the distance there? So the, the like orangish hat, that's Ms., Ms., uh, Graham. I believe that's her, her man friend to the left or something. Trustee Stubbs, trustee Mary Avant. I think this is trustee Byron Stanley. They're with her, protecting her. In this case, they're the bullies. They're the aggressors. They're kiki-ing, laughing, having a good time. I just wanted to talk to the Lansing Journal ladies. I'm like, I don't care about them. They're not gonna answer any questions anyway. Um, so it, it's just, ugh, it's really horrible. By the way, Paul, I just saw your Facebook post.
But we did not get any of our questions answered about where the money is. That's the bottom line.
Right, we did not get any of our answers.
And these guys, they're still having fun with all the tax money.
Mm-hmm.
And we are left barely, uh, affording our, our, how our homes. I don't know about you guys, but my tax bill went way up. And it is financial, um, almost financial panic time, you know? It's, it's really hard to afford.
Right. And this board has no-
Tightening their belts, the one lady, the last meeting, she spoke that she was going to have to consider putting her house up for sale.
Yeah, do you guys remember that?
Exactly Wyoming, folks should look into zoning the township. Yeah, well, yeah. I mean, obviously that's the only thing left, because look, you can't even ask questions without getting intimidated. Ms. Graham should know better. She is on the school board with 205. She's very close to Napoleon Harris. And she's trying to intimidate me, who is just a resident and a journalist trying to cover the meeting.
Yep.
And security is trying to tell me that I need to go instead of telling the aggressor that they need to go. And they're still there laughing and chit chatting. You can see, um, Mary Avant, you can see Valerie Stubbs, you can see, I think it's Byron Stanley. Yep. And then you see, um, Ms. Graham and then the gentleman that, that was accosting me there. And then the ladies with the Lansing Journal, which-
Hanging out.
I wanted to ask them a few things and they are-
And the, and they-
But yeah, this is just horrible. Like, we should never, ever, ever be treated like this at our public meetings. These are our public meetings.
And look, the dude, he never once said a word to the two aggressors. He's still eyeing me, like, I need to go.
Should never, ever, ever be treated like this.
Get outta here.
And they're just laughing. I guess they think it's funny. So they get to, to, they get to talk and stay around and laugh and have a good time. But then the person that they're harassing me, because I'm asking questions about the money, they're trying to get me to leave. I'm lucky to live in a state that decades ago made a law the state could not raise taxes more than a certain amount. My proper taxes are reasonable. Yeah, Wyoming, that's what we really need, definitely. We could do some laws like that. Although, to be fair, Indiana, next door, Indiana does have, have a law like that.
Indiana does cap their property taxes.
Yeah, we have people like this who are making life horrible for everybody.
Yeah, because you see how this board will get anybody to help fight for them so that they can, you know, the last thing they wanna do is lower our property taxes. You can tell they're, they are obviously profiting off of it.
Yeah.
And they don't want the system to change. It works great for the, for the people who are taking all of our resources. I'm not concerned about them. I'm concerned about the everyday person who can't-
And nothing said to, to Ms. Graham or the other gentleman that were the aggressors. Again, they're just there. Oh, they're laughing with the trustees. And they all saw how Ms. Graham and that guy accosted me.
And isn't it funny, especially Mary Avant and Valerie Stubbs, but they have so much to say. They're so talkative and chatty. But then when it comes to city, to township business or the actual meeting, like they, they all have a voice. They could speak up, they could disagree. They could explain why they disagree with something before they're voting. They could answer questions that the public asks. Like I answer at least, I asked at least four or five questions. And I really didn't get a good answer to any of them, I don't think. Napoleon sorta gave a quasi answer to one, but not really.
So apparently they think it's funny. Cause I guarantee you, they're all getting paid. They're all getting paid.
Oh, my goodness.
And like I told the security guard last time, there were these two guys that were like, well, luckily I was going to my car anyway, but they were walking. They were like walking to me. Or following me to my car. It was really strange, but I just said, ah, well, hey, you know, maybe it was a fluke or maybe, you know, I wasn't sure, but now I know. They were more than likely connected to those same people. So it's just, it's really, it's really, um, shame, you know, what we have, what we go through just to have basic rights. Okay, I'm gonna let this person leave whoever they-
Yeah, we're, it's just about done, guys, here.
Totally inappropriate. You go home now.
Sorry, now I'm chomping, I'm chomping the gum.
I literally do not want to see any of them.
Oh, and I'm reading your post, Paul. Exactly. A total stranger came up calling me racist. Yes.
Right, I wanted to ask Stephanie a question too. I wanna ask her a question and just be a normal citizen who's not being harassed at a, at a meeting. But no, she leaves though, she's gone.
Yeah, Stephanie had left at that point.
It's fine. But yeah, it's just a shame how that is.
But yeah, they're still kikiing, even as we drive, we drive off.
Adults. I mean, if you feel like somebody offended you, why do you have to say it in the meeting? You can go to the adult and talk to him about it.
Yeah, and it wasn't about that. They were just trying to start stuff to distract from Napoleon.
That whole thing was, uh, crazy. But that whole thing, uh, even, even last week when she approached me though, it was very, how do you explain, like ambush style? Like I could tell she was, she was trying to start something. So for those of you that don't know, Ms. Nina Graham is, um, Napoleon Harris says that she is-
I'll be right back, guys. I gotta get my-
You know, one of his mentors, et cetera, et cetera. So they are, they are very cool. So I'm not, I'm not surprised that she's defending, um, Mr. Harris. But again, this is nothing personal. Um, I, and I didn't say anything that was racist or inappropriate, but they were, um, they're just looking for distractions instead of holding these people accountable for how they're handling the money.
I, I know when she's saying that over there, what? I'm like, oh my God, what is this?
And Ms. Graham knows better. By the way, she, for those of you that are watching, um, yeah, not only is Ms. Graham, I think she's president of the 205 school board, high school school board, but she- Excuse me, I think she talked for many years. So she knows better than to behave this way. But Napoleon is her, one of her, uh, that she calls, you know, her, her star pupils. She's very protective of him. And, you know, it's just too bad because when you're in a public position and people ask questions about how you're spending money, you gotta be able to answer it. So you know, that's not appropriate.
Be in the public position.
You can't just start throwing the race card around or doing whatever you want to, to make distractions because they didn't, the bottom line is tonight, they didn't answer any of the questions that I asked or that other people had. So we don't know anything. We don't know why they had this special meeting. We don't know which insurance companies they picked. Um, they didn't say anything about the tax rate. So I'm assuming that they, that they did increase our property taxes again for next year. So the whole thing was just like, but yeah, what did you think, Ramona? Do you wanna share anything?
It, um, it's like after the statement that she made of her saying that, um, you, I don't know what your statement was this, the last meeting I was here. I didn't attend it, but whatever was said, um, you can't, um, use the race car because what if it had been a black person that was saying whatever it is that you said, would you have, would your reaction have been the same? Or would it have been different?
Yeah.
So it's all in how we conduct ourselves at a meeting. And just to tell you the truth, I've never been to meetings where people are so disrespectful. Is you can't say anything. You're so touchy or your feelings are gonna get hurt. Somebody says something you don't like.
Tell them, Ramona.
You don't wanna hear. That doesn't give you the right to be aggressive or say something that's not the truth, that the person did not say.
Right.
So, and you know, that, that, I don't call that a meeting. I call that just trying to justify whatever you wanna do or whatever you wanna say.
Did you?
Just catching up with the comments here. Let's see. Paul says, I look forward to the Lansing Journal's video and commentary about tonight's meeting. Yeah, definitely. Yeah, definitely. But I, I, I noticed what you, what you said to Paul, like they do, they, they try to, uh, to lay low probably because they don't want to get all that bullying. Um, not that they're safe from it either, but Hey Conscious, hey, hey, hey. I did, I, I shot you an email the other day because French reminded me to. He's, she was like, he, he was like, oh my gosh, tell her about the, the town hall, because then, you know, the mayor canceled the, our city council meeting yesterday. I'm sorry, I wish people would have listened to me last year when I warned you out, oh, you mean about Jed? But yeah, yeah. Hey, Ramona Wyoming said, or no apologies says, Wyoming says, hey Conscious Wyoming. Yeah, it was good. I, I actually, I liked, I liked hearing some Ramona's input.
Older man?
I've seen him, I've seen him before, but, you know, and, and these are senior citizens, these are-
Right. I don't, I don't expect seniors to be violent towards me. That's crazy.
I have never seen nothing like this in my life. I'm like, what is this?
You guys need to just go retire.
Crazy. I mean, I could make my statement as, as-
Go enjoy retirement.
And not offend anybody or say anything that they didn't really say. So, you know, you can't keep pulling the race car. It has, this has nothing to do with race.
Right.
This has to do with what is fair and what is equal in our communities, period.
Right.
If you're not complaining about the taxes going up.
Oh, no, about Marion says, oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Exactly. Yeah. Mm-hmm. Right, right. No, no, and remember when they, when they, the whole, uh, slate ran though, um, for the township, I, I told people not to support them. I, I actually, I support the Republicans not because I agree with everything, um, because Richard has some weird anti LGBT stuff that he's posted and stuff and everything. But the point was, right, like, you're never gonna have a perfect candidate. But I said, hey, at least they interviewed with me. I talked to them. I endorsed them, but yeah, I guess people didn't, people didn't listen. They just wanted Tiffany out so bad that they didn't ask enough questions about who was coming in. Tiffany out so bad, right, yeah. We had so much video on Marion, especially Stubbs. I'm not sure what people thought they would get so much video on Marion. I don't know either. And, you know, and Mary has, has, um, oh, uh, Jabar Conscious says she doesn't have you blocked. She can see you. But yeah, Wyoming, uh, you know, I was grateful, I've talked to Marion, I, I, you know, thanked her, um, she came a few times when Colby Chapman was arrested, you know, to Harvey, uh, to, to just show support. And Valerie Stubbs, I, I think came even to one of her arrests. So, you know, I could, I'll talk to anybody. It's not, we don't always have to agree. Um, we don't always have to be on the same side of, of issues. So I, you know, I was grateful that they did that. But I also did tell her, I, I said, when I was talking to Mary, you know, and I said, it's nothing personal. I, I can't support anybody. I can't support Napoleon Slate because he's shown himself not to be trustworthy. You know, to me, it didn't matter. Honestly, I didn't care who was on his slate. I just don't trust how he does things. And he has shown, he has proven himself to be untrustworthy so many times. Um, and, you know, and I remember Mary reassured me and she just said, because I said, you know, I want people that are independent. Like if you, if you, if you're gonna get on a slate, like with Napoleon like that, he's gonna end up controlling you. And she, she, you know, so, oh no, I'm independent. No one will ever control me or I'll say what I want. I'll say what I want. And I mean, I knew that this would happen, right? And they get in and are they independent? Are they saying anything? No, they have nothing to say. Other than what boss Napoleon tells them. So I agree with you. That's why I told people not to vote for, for this slate. Valerie Stubbs, the trustee before unconscious to deep dive on those years. Mm-hmm. Yeah, under Mayor, um, Rogers and Dalton, right? I mean, I'm not an expert on, on Ms. Stubbs, but, but I'm just saying, you know, it's, it's not, it's not enough just to not like somebody. You should at least find out something about the people maybe that you, you're voting to get in. And it just seems like the voters were, were hoodwinked and bamboozled, um, those that voted this board in, because I did not recommend them. And you know what? If you did and you regret it, it's okay. We will accept you. But you, you better get your ass on the line and come to the meetings and start making noise, you know, helping with petitions, helping, uh, to fix things. Because hey, we all make mistakes, you know? I've supported Clark in the past. And look, he's a total idiot failure, you know, horrible, horrible person. Uh, horrible mayor. But at least I'm trying to fix the problem. So you know, it's not that we're gonna condemn you to be like, oh, you voted for this board. You know, you're horrible. We're never gonna talk to you again. But if you did, just say, you know, oh, wow, I really screwed up, you know? So what can I do to help fix things? You know, it's never too late, but if you just don't do anything, then, you know, and you're like, oh, well, that's just politics, you know, another bad board, you know, okay, well, that doesn't help fix anything. Like, like, get to know your neighbors, get involved in community work. Um, we're, we're not always, guys, we need to be able to do things in our communities on our own. We can't sit around and expect these boards to, to save us or always do the right thing. We have to be our own saviors. Uh, e- even if you have good boards, it's just not, it's not healthy. We cannot expect a handful of political leaders to save us and make our lives great. I mean, if you think about it, just like I said, even if all of your, your local, state and federal leaders were everything you wanted them to be, do we really wanna give them that much power? Like, shouldn't we be more involved in our communities where we have some of the power or we have some of the control? Like, that's what I want. I want true democracy. Not this, this farce of democracy, you know? Conscious says, I feel bad for everyone there. Oh, thank you, Conscious. Yeah. But if anything, that's like I said, I, I don't want people to, to get discouraged and give up. It's just that we, we've gotta come together as a community and start doing the things that we want done. And making the things seen that we want seen, whether it's beautification, you know, helping people get food, helping the youth, um, helping bring businesses, whatever. Because time and time again, we've seen countless boards that just don't help, you know? Now, sometimes they do and sometimes we have good politicians, but I still think at the end of the day, the community, the people, the power should rest with the people. The drive, the energy, uh, should rest with the people. You, you shouldn't just say, well, okay, I, I, I'm too busy working. I mean, I get it, because everybody's busy working. We're all trying to survive, especially paying our property taxes. But you can't just cede your authority and say like, oh, well, well, maybe one day we'll have better politicians and the community will be better. Cause it's never gonna get fixed that way. You know, we've, we've all got to band together. Not every, every person doesn't have to do everything, but if everyone can just at least do something to help, that's what we need. We've got to have that. And that's not just a Harvey or Southland thing. That's wherever you live in the world, you know? But we can't keep giving our power to all these politicians at the local, state and federal levels, like I said, wherever we live in the world. And then complaining when things are bad, like, well, yeah, of course, because we're giving up all of our agency, all of our power, right? And you're just trusting, it's just really, it's just a few steps beyond the old feudal system, right? Where if you were a serf, most people were serfs, they worked the land, they had no rights whatsoever. And, you know, the kings and the lords and, and those who controlled the land had all the power. And so, yeah, they were just like, oh, we hope we get a good lord. We hope we get a good king, you know? Like what we're doing with these politicians, is it really that far off? Like, it's kinda similar, like, you know, a lot of times people don't wanna put the work in to really, to, to break the structures that are broken and to build a strong community where the people are getting shit done, you know? Like, look up the Black Panthers, look up, um, um, oh gosh, there are so many great community groups over the years that, that really just took care of their own people. And there, there are people that do that today. So, anyway. I, I did wanna go over very briefly, um, he, the senator mentioned the, uh, supervisor in this case, and senator, and what is he? Democratic committee man, Napoleon Harris. He mentioned something like, you know, I was saying something that wasn't true or whatever, as far as he churns. So I want to, let's look, let's look at the, at the receipts as they say, okay? And as Mr. Harris knows, no lies were spoken by me. Okay. So this is an article from, okay, sorry, this is a letter, a letter to the editor. June 24th, 2024. So not this past summer, but the summer before. State Senator Napoleon Harris III clearly has a conflict of interest. He's investing in an insurance brokerage while serving as the General Assembly's Insurance Committee Chairman. That can't be good for Illinoisans. This is the the Chicago, sometimes, okay? Let's, let's take a look. State Senator in the insurance brokerage called the Max Group and whether that entailed putting in money and what sort of income he might make from the deal. He's accepted campaign contributions- He's accepted campaign contributions from insurance companies that are shoving their rates down taxpayers' and citizens' throats. The CEOs of these big insurance companies continue to be like Robin Hood, except they aren't giving to the poor. They're giving to the rich and themselves. Meanwhile, Illinois politicians like Harris and Senate President Don Harmon from Oak Park. Come on, all you Oak Park activists. Get the fuck, get, get, get him the fuck out of there, Don Harmon. He does not match your values, no matter what he tells you. They've been recipients of campaign donations from the insurance industry while the taxpayers and citizens aren't even in the game. Keep your eyes, oh. Okay, wait, hold on. What did I do with it? Okay. What did you do? Okay, here. Keep your eyes open because this story is far from over, being over. We all know who's going to get messed over in this deal, and it isn't the Illinois politicians. That was from Gerald Burnson in Tinley Park. Now, there's another article that came, um, stop with the ads, Chicago sometimes. Why wasn't the original sometimes article from June coming up? Oh, here. Okay, I think here it is. Here's the original article. Okay. But I want you guys, please pay attention to this because they're expecting that we're gonna be ignorant fools and have short memories, okay? So we've got to remember these things. By Rob, the reporter's Robert Herguth. Let's see if he did a good job. This is June of 2024. What do you mean, sign up now? I should already be signed in. Thought, which one did I? There we go. Okay, cool. As chairman of the Illinois Senate Insurance Committee, State Senator Napoleon Harris III is a gatekeeper on legislation affecting the multi-billion dollar insurance industry. Now, the Flossmore Democrat. Hello? Hello? Did you catch that? Did you guys catch that? Who caught that? Put a one in the chat if you caught that. Where did it say he's from? Where did it say that he lives? This isn't from 2024. If you were listening and you caught that, put in the chat, don't put a one, put the name of the town where Napoleon Harris is from, according to this journalist for the Chicago Sometimes. If you were listening, put in the chat the name of the town where Napoleon Harris lives. All right, I'm gonna keep reading. Former NFL player has joined the industry he's helping to regulate, partnering, partnering with two men who run an insurance brokerage called the Max Group in the southwest suburbs of Chicago sometimes has learned. Even though Harris's chairman role can affect industry profits and regulations and consumer pocketbooks, Harris insists there's no conflict of interest with what he calls his new business venture. This was an opportunity to support a local business run by two area guys with longstanding impeccable credentials in the field, Harris said via text message. These are people I've known for years. They've helped me out with my own insurance needs well before I arrived in the Senate. My role is that of an investor. None of this bears any relationship to my work in Springfield. So in other words, if you're investing, you're getting a profit out of an insurance business, but then you were helping to regulate insurance businesses. How is that not a conflict of interest? He says, uh, if you look at the results, it's clear the insurance committee has been about improving the industry for consumers. And maybe they did, but still, it does not mean that that's not a, a conflict of interest. This is from his economic interest statement. So it's a source of income, Harris Brothers Group LLC, and then the Max Group Plus. So that's the insurance company. His panel and the rest of the General Assembly recently backed a series of consumer-friendly industry reforms pushed by Governor Pritzker, including banning what are called short-term limited-duration health insurance policies. According to the National Association of Insurance Commissioners, such policies are designed to fill temporary gaps in coverage when an individual is transitioning from one source of coverage to another, and generally are not subject to the consumer protections. Democrats in Congress have described these kinds of plans as dangerous and unregulated and a threat to the health and financial well-being of American families. Based in Crestwood, the Max Group, so that's like about maybe fifteen, twenty minute drive from Harvey, the Max Group helps clients procure business, personal and life insurance, and advertises various types of insurance coverage for public agencies, including municipal governments and park districts. Oh, wait, wait, wait. Oh, let's read that again. What did it say? Based in Crestwood, the Max Group helps clients procure business, da, 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 da. Insurance coverage for public agencies like municipal governments and park districts. You mean like, like, like a township board? Ah, nobody put in the chat where, where, nobody put in the, no one was listening? Nobody put in the chat where, um, where the journalist said that Napoleon lived? You guys, you know, I'm going back to my teaching days. Now you're failing on my, on my little, um, uh, formative assessment here. You weren't listening. Why do you think the township had trouble with insurance? Good question, Conscious. I would say probably shady stuff going on. Paul says, I was at a dot meeting in 2024 when Napoleon dismissed this and other sometimes articles by Robert Herguth, Herguth about him were just hatred by one crazy hitman who didn't like Napoleon. Thank you, Paul. That is great, uh, feedback. I did not know that. Okay. So it was just totally dismissed. Um, and they were saying this Max Group, you know, that, that they, they, uh, they help people get insurance. They help a lot of public boards get insurance. Agencies that often rely on state legislators for funding. Isn't that interesting? Like other state officials, Harris must file an economic interest statement each year showing outside income and in financial investments. The paperwork he filed may mention for the first time Max Group Plus, which shares the same executives and address with the Max Group. So he does, he does put his, his receipts in here, his screenshots to show you some more of this too. So this is, what was this supposed to be for? Oh, just showing how the insurance industry were big contributors to Napoleon Harris. Yeah, so Zurich, American Insurance Company, right? A thousand, thousand, fifteen hundred for contributions. Harris, who joined the General Assembly in 2013 and became Insurance Committeeman Chairman in 2019, wouldn't answer questions about how he came to be an investor in the company, whether that entailed putting in money and what sort of income he might make from the deal. But if you're an investor, you're, that means you're gonna, you're, you're not gonna invest for free. You're set to get something from it. Harris has also long derived side income through a company that runs a Beggars Pizza, Pizza franchise in Harvey. In 2022 and 2023, Harris's campaign fund accepted, accepted contributions from the Max Group totaling 2,500. According to the Illinois State Board of Elections, he's also accepted at least $60,000 overall from the insurance industry since the beginning of last year, state election board records show. That's a lot of money. And we have looked at Napoleon's D2s before, and he, he does, he has a lot of contributors from the insurance industry. That includes $10,000 from the Allstate Insurance Company, 7,500 from State Farm, 6,000 from Cigna, 1,500 from uh, Illinois Life and Health Insurance Council that had been involved, talked about Pritzker's legislation this year. Pay to play, man. John Patterson, a spokesman for Illinois Senate President Don Harmon, an Oak Park Democrat, boo, I'm not very pleased with him. By the way, this is the same guy that was reported that he helped Napoleon sneak in that provision so that he can get his big fat, uh, over $200,000 a year salary that this guy, Don Harmon, snuck in the Crohn's Disease Bill. Like, what a, what a, what a horrible person to do that. So they were saying Harris has shown himself to be a knowledgeable, independent voice in his foster conversation, conversations in the insurance committee that have led to pragmatic solutions that work. Okay, well then, maybe you should divest from that company then. You know what I mean? Like, he could, Napoleon could, people aren't saying you, he can't be in the insurance regulation, right? But like, or at least be honest that it's a conflict of interest. Harmon's also been a recipient of significant campaign money from insurance companies. Okay. Wow, 100,000 combined from Allstate and State Farm, more than 10,000 from Illinois Life and Health Insurance Council. Harris grew up in Dixmoor, attended Thornton Township High School in Harvey and played football at Northwestern University before becoming a linebacker for the Oakland Raiders, Minnesota Vikings and Kansas City Chiefs. He ran for Senate unsuccessfully in 2016, losing in the Democratic primary to current US Senator Tammy Duckworth. Asked about Harris's insurance company, insurance committee chairmanship and his insurance broker investments, Pritzker's office will only say that the governor looks forward to this new era of consumer protection and will continue working with the General Assembly to deliver even more reform in the future. In other words, oh, no, we don't tell, we don't squeal on fellow, fellow Democrats, you know? Not that Republicans are any better. I'm not saying that. Both, I, I, I don't have any respect for either big party, by the way. Um, and let's go back up to the top because this was a change that was made now in January. Let me see, did I miss any comments? No. So earlier this year in January, State Senator Napoleon Harris out as chairman of committee regulating insurance industry. So Napoleon Harris, and you know better. That is not a lie. Now, you know what I, you know what I'm gonna do for you guys? Because I showed you the receipts and I showed you, I wanna show you how I tell the truth, okay? I'm not making stuff up here. Hold on one sec, I'm gonna find it for you. All right, so I wanna go back to we're gonna play his words right now, people, right now. Okay, so listen, this is Napoleon's words from earlier this evening about the insurance stuff, cause he's gonna try to say that I was lying about him. There was no conflict of interest. There sure was before you stepped down from that regulate, regulatory position. So he, he lied in that respect. I don't know if he was just talking about the township, but anyway.
They just lied or insinuated something that was a false narrative. So with that being said,
No, you had conflicts of interest with, when you regulated insurance companies and you were investing in an insurance group. So that was not a lie. So that means you just lied, Senator and Supervisor Harris.
For the same insurance companies that were hit private to our right, this is what's right here, taking over. So I wanna clear up any false narrative. So as they say, go run and kill that.
As he looks at me at the camera and by, Mr. Byron there smirking, you know? These people that just do nothing but kiss Napoleon's butt. Um, so fact checkers, get on it. Is this the same insurance that we had under Tiffany or not? We'll have to, we'll have to find this out.
We don't have presentation that was my supervisor's report.
Cause that's what I wanna know. It's one of the things I wanna know too. Okay, I do wanna go back to the article, but as Paul, Paul says, the January 2025 article implies that Napoleon's chairmanship at the committee regulating insurance companies was too much of an embarrassment even for Senate President Don, right? You know, you know you look bad when Illinois Democrats are like, ooh, you know, we should probably remove him from that, cause that looks bad. Because they don't embarrass easily, okay? They do not embarrass easily. Um, oh man, again. Oops, I meant to log in. Hopefully it's not signing me up again. Uh, but anyway, so this is the January article. When the sometimes reported last year that State Senator Napoleon Harris III had become an investor in a Southwest suburban insurance brokerage business while serving as a gatekeeper on legislation impacting the insurance industry in Illinois as head of his chambers insurance committee, the Flossmore Democrat insisted there was no conflict of interest. Again, if you're listening, show me you're listening by putting in the chat where this, for the second time, where this, um, journalist from the Sun Times says that Napoleon Harris lives. So put that in the chat again, if you were listening. And what did the journalist say in the article about where Napoleon Harris lives? This is an article written this year in January. None of this bears any relationship to my work in Springfield. If you look at the results, it's clear the insurance committee has been about improving the industry for consumers. Oh, yes, Napoleon. I mean, people are never gonna do anything wrong, you know? I mean, we should just trust you, right? Now Harris is out as chairman of that committee, but it's unclear whether the 2024 revelations about his insurance side venture played into the recent decision by State Senator President Don Harmon, an Oak Park Democrat, to transfer him out of that assignment for the new legislative session. Asked about this, Harmon Spokesman John Patterson said, with the start of every new general assembly, there's a shuffling responsibilities to best recognize senators' interests, experience, expertise. The leadership and committee chair announcements for the 104th General Assembly reflect the great diversity of people and talent we have in the Illinois Senate Democratic Caucus Caucus. So basically, didn't say anything. It was just like, oh, we didn't do anything wrong. Patterson portrayed Harris losing the post as part of a promotion. I remember that saying Senator Napoleon Harris has moved into the position of assistant majority leader. Senator Harris has been a leader for his community focusing on pubs. You guys, I cannot read this with a straight face. Conscious, help me, if you're still there. I know you'd be laughing too. Senator Harris has been a leader for his community focusing on public safety and health, specifically working to bridge the gap in healthcare for disadvantaged communities and initiatives to keep kids in school. Wow. Okay, I don't know about all that. Harris, a former NFL linebacker, joined the General Assembly in 2013. Okay, yeah, we, we saw that before. He didn't respond to calls or texts. Okay. Yeah, and while he was overseeing this committee, he accepted tens of thousands of dollars in campaign contributions from insurance companies. How is that not legal? I don't understand. Okay, and they're talking about the new lady they put in his place. Wait, what? State Senator Dave Seiverson, a Rockford area Republican who served last, see, I'm telling you, this is how you know both parts, don't think that the Republicans are the saviors either, okay? Both of the big parties are bought by big money and I don't trust either. State Senator Dave Seiverson, Rockford area Republican who served last year on both the health and the insurance committee, says, citizen legislature slaters often bring potential conflicts, but the key is being upfront about them. And Harris was. He told me at the very beginning what he was doing, adding that some of the bills voted under Harris for things the insurance companies didn't support or like. So surely, you know, as long as, as long as he told you that he was investing in insurance at the same time as he was regulating, you know, as long as he, he told you, I'm sure that means he, he was not doing anything wrong at all. Harris, who wants to unseat Dalton Mayor Tiffany Henyrd in the upcoming election for supervisor. Okay, yeah, yeah, yeah. Oh, and that was the, the contribution for using, uh, his campaign funds for like luxury items and things. And on his pizza parlor in Harvey. Records shows campaign fund friends of Napoleon Harris paid the Max Group $325 in August in what was described as insurance for a picnic. Oh, yes, that's right. Okay, okay. Mm hmm. The company's website says, our firm is committed to the highest degree of ethics, accountability and professionalism. We'll provide your company with tailored solutions to effectively manage risk from highly regarded insurance character, carriers at a competitive premium. Bravo. Good, good reporting, Mr. Her, Hergoth. All right, let's see. I'm gonna come back. Was anybody listening? Was anybody listening? Was anybody listening? Oh, nobody put the, nobody in the chat with his, his, the town that the, the journalist said he lives in. Cause I want you guys to pay attention to that because, you know, people are like, oh, we don't have proof. It's been reported on where Napoleon lives. Okay, and then Paul says, I think Alliant was the only brokerage who could find someone to underwrite Tiffany. Carmen Carlisle told us they were the township's insurance broker. Frank Z avoided Alliant. Okay. Okay, so that was the, the, the firm that they said when they voted. It was a little hard for me to understand, you know, partly because he talks so quietly, but partly because they're so far away from us too. And Conscious says, this is so heartbreaking to watch. It was a setup from the very beginning to gain power. Remember Ryan? Remember Ryan, Nikita said, "Reform the South. As soon as I saw Mary walk up the stairs with Jed, I knew." Yeah, wait, uh, Mary walk up the stairs, where was that? Mary walking up the stairs with Jed? But yeah, definitely, it was, oh, definitely, they wanted, they wanted all the power from Tiffany. You know, like I always said, they didn't want to fix the corruption, they just wanted to take it over. And they put on maybe a little bit more polished of a face, they're a little quieter about it. But as you can see tonight, they're not beyond bullying, you know? They're bullying me because I'm asking some good questions, you know? And Paul, imagine if you had been there tonight, you think they would have sicked fellow senior citizens on another senior such as yourself and bullied you? That would have been interesting. Oh, and Dalton, yes, yes, yes. And I agree with you, Conjust, yeah, Mary, same thing, because people were, early in the chat and people were saying, you know, like, "Oh, well Stephanie's running for committeemen." Like, "Why, why is Amir or Beth, you know, why are some people not, not supporting her?" Well, she still says she's working with Jed, so I understand, like, you know, people are gonna have concerns about that. Look at all the harm that Jed is doing. Like, why would you want to elect someone that's saying they're still working with him? And then Mary has that same issue, right? She could choose to do the right thing at any point, but she doesn't. She still supports Jed too. Oh, July of 2024. Nice, good memory. Okay, yeah, see, I was still, I had just been arrested not long, long before that in Harvey. So yeah, I wasn't really covering Dalton yet. Yes, that's why Jennifer insisted I stay home instead of asking the question to... Ah! Jennifer, you want to meet, you want to meet a guy beat up by the elderly people? That is kind of hilarious, but that's okay, I know. But in a way though, like, you know, I would always, I would, I would always defend you, Paul. In a way, it would kind of be interesting. I would love to test it to see how far they would go and I would love to get that on video and then, you know. I would, shoot, I put in a police complaint. I may, I may go to South Island Police tomorrow and file a report, file complaint. We'll see, I don't know. Because yeah, they were really close to fighting me. It was, that was super close. That was like, it was pretty... It was, that was very shady and very not comfortable. That's so crazy. So Jennifer thought that too. She's like, "They don't care. They'll get, they'll get some elderly people to attack other elderly people. They're not gonna care, Paul. Be careful." Yeah, well, I'm glad I went and asked the questions because they needed to be asked. That's the bottom line, you know? They were envious of her. Yes, they were all envious of Tiffany. Not wanting to fix the problem for the public, but just wanting to take the power and the money. You know, that was always my critique. Okay, but yeah, I just wanted to show that about him. And now that we know it's Alliant, should we look up, what are they called again? Alliant Insurance? Okay, is this them? Is this them, Cruck? Or whoever said Alliant? So maybe that's them, huh? And Alliant Insurance Services in Chicago? Let's see. Oh, that's listing nationwide. So in other words, they're a brokerage, basically. So they, they, okay, so it was actually like a broker, I guess, huh? Oh, Paul, Bravo on your post. We got some, Tim Young on your Facebook post. Tim, Tim DeYoung says, "I got some heat for that board if I can ever make it to a meeting." Okay, I'll say, "Message me and we can go together." Yeah, Tim, you should put, put some heat on, on, on Mr. Antoine Russell because you were, you ran for that position and you should have been elected. You would have been a much better highway commissioner. Sharon McGee says, "Stay... Stay safe, stay safe, Ryan, and never..." "Stay safe, Ryan, and never change for no one." Ah, that's sweet. Thanks, Sharon. Oh, you guys, this is sad. Someone on Facebook just said, um... Oops, sorry, hold on. Catching up with your comments. "Abid their next month," Paul says, "even though it will increase what we had to..." What we pay to Allied Security, it increases what we pay to Allied Security. I'm so glad you asked those questions tonight. Oh, thank you. That's what I'm saying. I'm like, "Come on, people. It's gotta be power, power to the people, power of the people." I appreciate the support because, you know, I don't want them, I also don't want it to be portrayed. I mean, I'm not freaking out about however they want to try to frame things. But I'm just saying, I don't want it portrayed like I'm the enemy as this, as like I'm the only one asking questions. Like, everybody wants to know these questions, you know? So they can't, they cannot, they can't hide from everybody. I just happened to ask them tonight. But yes, yes, well, Paul, you show up and definitely, I'll try my best whenever they have a meeting to be there and support. That's an international insurance firm. Alliance with a Z, okay, okay, okay. So I'll, I just, I Googled the, maybe they said it different. Okay, Alliance. Oh, it says it's German? Huh. Okay. But listen to this. I think this is so sad and I have to reply on Facebook. So there was something, something I posted, oh, when I had foiled, "How much are we paying for Mayor Clark's security?" And the city didn't want to answer. They were playing games with me. And this lady, Georgetta, don't, don't feel bad. You're not alone. That's what I'm saying. We all gotta stick together. She says, "I want to move so bad, but my husband is comfortable living here. I never tell people I'm from Harvey. I just say I'm from the south suburbs. It's a shame how all of the past and present mayors have drained the city's finances." Oh, I'll send her a little care thing and I'll say, "Don't you ever be ashamed of being from Harvey. You are not alone. I would love to meet you. We have to stick together and show them the power of the people, of the people." Oh, Georgetta, I feel so bad when she, with that comment though, that really tugged on my heart. And she said, "I never tell people I'm from Harvey." It's like, you shouldn't have to be ashamed, like, we have a, we have a beautiful, lovely history and we have a lot of great people here still now today, not just the history. Yeah, oh, that's a cute picture of her. Those must be her parents. Look at that. Oh, wow, March of 62, yeah, those must be her parents. Wait, can you guys see? That's so cute. I wonder if that's actually in Harvey. I wonder how long she's been in Harvey. But anyway, so yeah, Georgetta, I'm gonna add you as a friend and I'll message you. I'm gonna say, "Your comment really got to me. I don't want you to feel bad that you're from Harvey. I want you and all of us to be proud of our city." So we'll see, maybe she'll, she'll answer back. Oh, you guys saw that. I have to watch that video. Maybe I should watch it with you, with you all. I know random news came out with a new Jed video, by the way, you guys. But there was a, there was a Harvey video here too that... Connection is really bad. Okay, hope, oh, that was for the meeting, yeah. I'm gonna apologize to this guy. I'm sorry. I don't know why it was tonight. It was bad tonight. I was gonna say, hopefully not for this though, because I'm, I'm hardwired now. How was the reception now? Is it okay? Should be good here. Oh, did you guys want, do you guys want to glance at Napoleon's D2s again? Let's do that. Do you guys know how to look for D2s? I can show you. I'll show you right now. Okay, so if you Google, um... Sunshine, Illinois. That should take us to the right. Please, where is it? Is this it? Reform for, Reform for Illinois. Oh, here we go. Illinois Sunshine. Keep an eye on money in Illinois politics. So let's take a look here. Let's search for, and you can put in a name, so we'll do Napoleon Harris. I've searched him before. Alright, so we have one candidate. You can see Napoleon Harris, officers. Okay, yeah, because he's the Chair of Friends of Napoleon Harris and Democrats of Thornton Township, dots. Alright, so let's go to, well, this would be in his capacity as what, Senator? I guess either. Let's just look at donors in general. How is this sorted? Should we do amount or do you sort it by date? Actually, there should be more though. I think there would be more. Uh, let's go to Friends of Napoleon Harris, okay. Support the election, Napoleon Harris. Almost 77,000 investments, damn. Okay, oh, this is top 25, okay. Yeah, you want to start, let's start there. Oh, I'm sorry, I just realized, I'm in this new tab. Okay, now can you guys see the new tab? Can you see? Now remember, I'm showing you how to look up, uh, D2, one way to look up D2s for these candidates, so look up who their donors are. Okay, so this is top 25 donors. So the first one here, Napoleon Harris himself, 350,000. Because remember, he made, now he makes a big township salary. He makes a good salary at the Senate. He makes, I think he makes some money as committee man, but I'm not certain off the top of my head. And then he has some sort of, I don't know, pension or something from the NFL and then he has his pizza, um, locations. So, and then who knows, he probably has other income as well. So he paid himself 350,000. Napoleon Illinois, for Illinois in 2018. Oh, that's when he lost the Senate bid. Okay, he paid himself 250,000. Chicago Land Operators Joint Labor Management PAC. Okay, so that's like unions or something, 53,000. Friends of Tim, Tim Nitra Burris. Now, wait a minute, that's the lady that Burris, that's the same last name, Paul. Who else mentioned her? That's his chief of staff, right? Who is she? To elect Tim Nitra or Tim Nitra Burris to public office? Oh, boy, so we got some connections there too, I see. Hmm, okay. Ameren, Ameren, what is that, you guys? Is that gas? What's Ameren? I should know that. Anyway, Healthcare Services Corp. Employees PAC, so something related to healthcare, Illinois Insurance PAC, yep. Related to healthcare. Committee for the December 13th concert event, oh, that was in 2014. That's a lot of money, almost 30,000. Allstate Insurance, what was it we're looking for again? Oh, I wanted to see if Alliance shows up. Illinois Trial Lawyers PAC, Citizens for Better Education, Illinois Hospital Association, State Farm, Launa, Chicago Laborers, okay. Come on, union people, find someone better to support. That's, that's shameful. Cigna, Marquee Energy, IPACE, I don't know what that is. Citizens for Jacqueline Collins. Wow, they gave him a lot of money. Who's Jacqueline Collins? Damn. Some, some sort of pharma group here, United Health Group, Amazon, oh, that's a lot, 15,000. Comcast, AFSCME, Illinois, okay, yeah, that's more unions. Wind Creek, ha, 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 the new casino, gave him 15,000. What a scam, man, come on. Steel Company. Let's look at all donations, let's see. Oh, here, this, this will, this will take us in order of, um, time. Paul, are you still on? Paul, do you see, uh, thank you, there you are, Paul. The Burris connection, do you see this? I think Carla Burris's daughter is running for office, perhaps, MWRD, oh, so that's Team, Tim, Tim Nitra is her name? Utility Company that serves Central and Southern, thank you, Ameren, Ameren or whatever, yeah. I was gonna say, is it like electricity? Because I know it rings a bell, I just couldn't, you know, think of it. But, so look at this, so recently he got something from Electrical Contractors Association, Food and Paper Supply, United Health Group, ah, he's still getting insurance stuff, you guys. Healthcare again, Illinois Hospital Association, CVS, Aqua Illinois. Wait, is that, is that the same water company that serves University Park? I'm gonna see if that rings a bell. Friends of Tim Nitra Burris, yeah, transferred $50,000. That was only a month ago, October 22nd. So now we know why his chief of staff, I guess, is some Burris. Gotta be a connection. Midwest Gaming Entertainment, 5,000. I don't know if that's connected to the new casino, but Enterprise Holdings, I don't know what that is. Eli Lilly, that's healthcare, Wright Pharma. Allstate, Barano Holdings, we would have to look up like who that is. Insurance, here's insurance, American Property Casual Insurance Association Political Account. Is that connected to Alliance? Government Relations, Sports Betting, Amazon Stripe, Inc. Interesting. Yeah, in August, Napoleon paid himself 23,000. Like, damn dude, like, you don't need any more money. Cut that salary already. Give it back to the taxpayers. There's Ameren again, or Ameren, how would they say it? CSX gave him money. Hospital Association, Marquee Energy, Constellation Energy, Nexus Family Healing, Gold Rush Amusements, Casper Nodge PC. US UPS, UPS PAC, oh, okay, that's like maybe UPS, John Deere, State Farm. Firefighters, Water Company, ChemPac, Penn National Gaming, another gaming company? Is he on a gaming board? I brought tea, people's gas, Friends of Jason House. Uh, okay, so we can see, we see who Jason's aligned with, huh? See, this is the other problem I have, you guys. Look, 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 look. Who did the audits that were barely audits? They were horrible. They were basically just forwarded financial reports, you know, from, from township staff. This is the auditor, John Casper. This summer, that same com- This summer, that same company donated five thousand dollars. Okay? I know it's not illegal, but that's it just should. I don't know. I just doesn't it doesn't sit right with me. You shouldn't be able to donate to the politician and then they hire you. It's not right. Tim Nitra Burris is running for Cook County Assessor. Oh, interesting. For Cook County Assessor against against Fritz Kegy. Huh? Now you see, so Napoleon got some bit, some pretty big money from. The Tim Nitra Burris campaign for the assess for assessor. See how you just never know how people and things are linked with this stuff. Let's see next page. There's Wind Creek again. Yeah, this was all. This was all still this past summer. Wind Creek Carpentry Lawyers, Tony Sherman. Flying Spirits Locksmith. Anthony McCaskill. Okay, so you know the McCascles and uh. According to the money, the pastors Napoleon are connected. Tasha S. Williams. I don't know who that is. Patrice Burton, Greg Mitchell, McDonald's. Five thousand. Come on, McDonald's. Get some better people. Heritage Party of South Island. Ah, Mayor de Graff. Come on, boo, boo, boo. And Tim, aren't you part of the Heritage Party of South Island? Come on, tell them. Don't be giving money to that dude. Lynette Stokes is um. She's over. She's like a superintendent, I wanna say, of one of the school districts, position fence. Club twenty two with that. Okay, can I search for Alliance? Can I search? Right? Maybe if I go back to the search thing. Hold on. Cuz you know Alliance, they might not donate under their. That name. Let's see. Did I spell it right with the Z? Casparic donated five K to Tiffany every year. The cost of doing business in Thornton Township. Exactly. Right, right. And then they get. So then they get the the auditing contracts and then also it's like surprise, surprise. Their audit, their audits never seem to be very controversial, you know, it's just the system is not, that's not set up right. But this is Alliance, right? Aha, that's what I wanted to see. Do you guys see? Look. Alliance Global Risks. Isn't that the the company? Now, look, American Property Casualty Insurance Association Political Account. Don't you? Don't we remember just seeing that? So now we're gonna go back. Oh, wait. Uh, sorry, I was just distracted cuz I'm like, oh, there actually are some here to Alliance Global Assistance. They donated some to. Okay, to JB Pritzker, but. Yeah, not not that much, though. So let's go back to. Napoleon Harris, and now we're gonna look to see. Look for that same name. Cuz I know we saw it. We'll do all donations. Look for that same name. Uh, there it is. There, right here. Okay, so. According to this, not a huge amount, but it shows that they did just. The board, according to show showing this connection here that we just found. The board just voted to give the insurance business to a donor. Uh, one of Napoleon's donors, American Property Casualty Insurance Association Political Account. Which. Gets um. They've also given to. Marcus Evans. LG Sims. Very interesting, you guys. Yeah, was it in the top twenty five? I forget. Let's look. Or actually, no, 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 I'd rather. Let me look. Let's look by date again to see if they contributed. Before. Okay, no, I don't. I don't see it. Not seeing a more recent one. Let's also go back to top twenty five donors. I don't think they were in the top twenty five, though. Hmm, okay. Well, I don't know. Does that? Do you think that means anything? Crooks said I seen that coming from a mile away. Yeah, so it's not according to this anyway. Just from this this cursory investigation, it doesn't look like that would be a big amount, you know, it was only a thousand dollar donation. But still, I mean, that that I believe shows that that um. That indeed. Uh, they chose to give the business to a comp to to a donor. You know, a company that donated to uh, to Napoleon. Yeah, I'm gonna search for them again on Alliance with the Z. Right? Oops, 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 oops. Alliance. Hmm. Okay, this is interesting. I'm gonna share this tab with you guys. So when this is the same one, I think we found before, right? The uh. American Property Casualty Insurance Association Political. Account, political, actually, it's a PAC. Got almost a half million in funds available. They've got plenty of money. Well, the top donors. That are that give to this PAC. That gave a thousand dollars to. Napoleon. We have. Aggregate Membership Dues, Erie Insurance. Okay, so it looks like. Uh, it looks like mostly a whole bunch of insurance companies. Yeah, pay into this PAC. Probably to lobby to pay employ politicians to to. So the politicians buy their policies, I would imagine, huh? And there's Alliance, right? Amanda and whoever else mentioned it. That's the one. Alliance Global. So like that was their dues and then that. So they paid. Into this company and then this company gave a thousand to Napoleon. Very interesting. Okay, did you guys get all that? Did we ever look up Mary's uh, uh, D two's? I forget. Do you guys wanna do that real quick? I'm sorry. I don't wanna keep you guys forever, but. You know, you see how sometimes when you get going on this stuff, it just. That's why I'm like, please donate to my Patreon. Please donate to me. I should. I should open my Patreon and send you guys a link. I'm also gonna buy a I I create one of those buy me a coffee links too. Cuz you know, real estate sales are slow, okay? That's what I talked about tonight, like. I am very conservative with my funds. I put patches on my work pants. I don't even. I'm not even buying new pants, you know, and then these these public boards, they're like going on extravagant trips with our money. Like, that must be nice. Must be nice. Where's my picture? Sorry, guys. I'm just trying to get the link. I still gotta work on it. It's not set up. Political horseplay. Yeah, yeah. So this is my Patreon. Join, donate. I tried to. I I made three membership levels. I think I think that the top tier, it's like a monthly thing you can do to to support. Uh, your favorite creators, but the the top tier um is like um. Access to French lessons. And then I also shared a poll on my Patreon to be like, what do you? What are you guys interested in? Cuz you know, I could, I can. I can create um, French lesson videos for you guys. I could do. I could also do English lesson videos. I started that on on. Instagram and just never uh, haven't gotten back to it in a while. But. I could give voice lessons if you wanna sing. I have a degree in voice as well. So I have it. I have a uh, uh, degrees in voice, French and. English and education. So I mean, I can teach all of those for sure. I could teach other things too, but those are the ones that I actually went to school for. But yeah, that's my Patreon. So please, please consider supporting me if you wanna see more of this local reporting cuz it takes a lot of time, as you can see, and I don't get paid for any of this stuff. Let's go back to Miss Mary. Oh, none of them are active, though, huh? Which one was it? Democratic or independent? Let's start with this one. Friends of Mary Seavant. Okay. No money available. Interesting. Okay, I don't. Do you recognize these? Melvin Roland. Isla La La Isla Bonita Marina, Philip Powell, Robert Patton, Patrick Clayton, Rosie Leftwich, Rose Gordon, Adam Farage, Food and Paper Supply. I saw that show up on Napoleon's before. Jones for state rep. Oh, oh, we should have known better, huh? Roger supported her. Roger Agpawa and Mark and Patricia Pults, John Steele. Arthur Hannah, Sean Brown, Arthur Hannah, Mary Avant. Okay, I don't. Do you guys reckon? I don't recognize really those people. Oh. Okay. Oh, that was. That was an old one. Okay, okay, okay. Now wait, there's just Mary Avant. Okay. Oh, she ran as mayor before. I didn't even know that. Oh, these are her when things. Okay, so she she contributed to Kiana Belcher. Dots, dots, dot. Whoa, four thousand to dots. Wow, four thousand to dots. Damn. Okay, yeah. So that's probably where they she and Napoleon worked out a deal, I guess, huh? Wow, that's a lot of money. Yeah, to her own campaign and then Kiana Belcher. And Tiffany and but that was twenty twenty one. Okay. Anybody else you guys that you're like, who else on that board? We wanna look up their. Their uh, donations. I mean, they're all so quiet. Let's look up uh, no, no, let's look up Valerie Stubbs. Okay, she contributed to Riley's Friends. No, I wanna see if she had any committees, though. Nothing? Maybe that's why she. Let's let's try maybe just Valerie Stubbs. Valerie Stubbs. See if anyone comes up under Valerie Stubbs. No, just Valerie. Hmm. Well, she donated to Dots again. Oh, wow, look at that big money. Just like Mary, four thousand, four, two payments, eight thousand dollars earlier this year. To Dots. Damn, that's crazy. Okay, I'm sorry. These people don't need all that money. Oh, she supported the Shaw, the Shaw Brothers. And Riley. Not much, though, under her. Who's another one on the board? Antoine Russell. I spelled the name right. Friends of Antoine Russell. Okay, so you know, not a ton in his account. Uh, let's see here. If we go back to One Stop. Uh, is that Harvey One Stop? It's a law firm. It looks. Looks like a law firm. Um. Antero Group. Yeah, okay. Antoine Russell, he loaned himself five thousand. James Vesely. There's this group again. Is that a law firm? Cameron Forbes, Antoine Russell loaned himself more money and then New Horizon Steel twenty five hundred. Okay, so he didn't have a ton showing up under there. Is it the same one I just clicked on? I think so. Yeah, yeah. Oh, you know what? Do you guys wanna see uh? Do we wanna see who's donating to Dots? How about that? Do you wanna see who's donating? Jed Milk, all her funds from that account. Oh, yeah, I just, it's great, like. How do these ladies get that money? Eight thousand dollars to give within two months? I'm like, I'm over here pinching pennies, okay? She paid for her seat. Mm hmm. Yeah. Um, I'm sorry. Can you guys see? Am I on the right one? Yeah, yeah, okay. Let's see who gives to Dots, shall we? Should we do top twenty five? Oh, Lord, I'm afraid to to look here. Marcus Evans. Yep, sounds familiar. Anthony McCaskill, four thousand. Oh, my God. Oh, he just gave it this month, four thousand. I wonder if he took it from the library at the parks. Thaddeus Jones just gave about thirty five hundred in the summer. Byron Stanley. Pay to play forty one hundred. Larry Rogers. For I would say Friends of Frank Zuccarelle gave twenty twenty two. McCaskill gave five thousand the past. Joy for Justice. That I think about five thousand. I think that was the lady who ran for Supreme Court Justice. Richard and Barbara Matthews. Don't know who they are. Will Davis, of course, they're all. They all work together. He gave fifty six hundred earlier this year. Petrarka Gleason Boyle and Izzo. Who's that? That's what we're looking at right now. Exactly, Paul. Yep, these are the top donors to Dots. Cuz I just thought, ooh, I think people would wanna know that, right? I'll even make it a little bit bigger for you guys. Can you say a little bit better too? These are all some pretty big donations. These are the top twenty five as far as in amounts. Okay, so they're not. These aren't done by date. Lawrence Jackson, who was just convicted. So he donated almost six thousand. Tiani Hill, I don't know who that is, fifty six hundred. John Casparic, told you it's all pay to play, seventy seven hundred. Wow. This March, Citizens for Chris Gonzalez, eight thousand. Dollars he gave to Dots. Friends of Mary Avant, again, eight thousand seventy five. Valerie Stubbs. Eighty one fifty five. Cassandra Holbert. She's the assessor, right? Eighty eight hundred. You gotta pay to play with these people for sure. It's about the money, baby. You give them that money, see? But I don't wanna be controlled by that. I don't like that. Lynette Stokes, and again, I forget what she does, but she paid ninety five hundred. She's got a big position here somewhere. Memphis Mechanical, Putting Children First, Cook County College Teachers Union. Boo, unions, don't give to that. Don't give to Dots. Chicago Heights Construction, they gave a lot to JB for Governor JB. Panera Architects. Hmm. Right? It's like, I wonder what business they get. I now I haven't. Right? It's like, I wonder what business they get. I haven't seen them for Harvey, but they must. Oh, I see Bloom Township, DeLuca. One Tinley Park, Greater Homewood, okay, yeah. All this pay to play stuff. Now let's look at all donations, okay? So we're gonna look this this will be in order of of um by date. Seats for the trustees, we're going for AK the township, yep. So you can see, you you put up AK, you get you get elected uh by NAPO and he said, he sends old people. He sends old people uh uh to to attack um to attack uh your opponents for you. Like, I remember how remember how their whole slate, they would never go to any forum, they wouldn't answer any questions, like that's how they roll. Lynette Stokes, President of South Suburban, thank you, I knew it. And Tihan Hills on the board there, yep. Pay to play, see? Stop fucking picking people like that. That drives me nuts. Get out of there, Lynette Stokes and Tiani Hill, that shouldn't. I'm not saying you can't get to parties, but you know Dots doesn't do things right. Alright, so this is by time, okay? Great Line Electric, these are the most recent donors to Dots, Democrats at Thornton Township. Great Line Electric, DHK Square, I don't know what some of these are, Food and Paper. Where is this Food and Paper Supply? They are always donating. Do you guys know where? Where is that located? Curious. Margaret Crook for State Central Committee, huh? Okay, Marcus Evans. Scor- Scorabius. Ah, Paul, didn't you tell me what this is? What's Scorabius? What is that? I forget what that is, but I think you told me. Heritage Party November, come on. Oh, Heritage Party of South Town. You guys are crushing. You're 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 really letting me down, guys. Jesus. Don't kiss their asses. That's what I want people to stop. If everybody were to stop kissing Dots asses, you know, Napoleon, eventually and and stop giving them money, they wouldn't be able to do the shit they do, be great strategies. Keisha McCaskill, just this month, fifteen hundred. So boom, we know he's back in Keisha for sure. Andre, I don't know who that is, Andre Zepetti. Chicago Heights Construction again, John Kasparic again. So of course, they're not gonna write up an audit that 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 actually reveals what's going on in the township. And then the lawyer has that nerve, Steve Ladisinski, to say, oh, you missed it, you weren't here. They are, they presented on the finances, whatever. No, they didn't. Anthony McCaskill again. Lynette Stokes, Planera Midwest, Friends of Timnitra Burris, there's Burris again, Genesis Building Services, Tiani Hill, Bob Rita, Bob. Benita Estelle, Raja for Illinois, oh. Oh, he wants he wants support for his campaign, that's why. Marshon Tolbert even even gave a little bit, three three hundred eleven. Okay, that's random. I don't recognize these these names. Some of you might. Margaret Dawson, Latoya Hughes, Thaddeus Jones, again, Troy Quinn, yeah. Meredith Hammer, twenty about twenty five hundred. So who are these people? Petrarka Gleason Boyle and Izzo Inc. Is that a law firm? Will it tell us? Um, doesn't say, but I'm just usually that that's kind of like how the law firms, I feel like have their names. Luckett Michelle, Valerie Stubbs. The Sparty Law Group, I've seen that name, Gordon Smith. Judge Linda Sackey, Latoya Hughes, Bianca Brown, Jimbo's, oh, Jimbo's. I like Jimbo's, but yeah, it's probably a play to play, pay to play thing. Robert Hunt. Okay, so he's trying to make sure they don't tell on him, huh? Keisha McCaskill again. Is this is this educational, you guys? Let me go back to the chat. Food and Paper Supplies on South Chicago Avenue in the City. Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you, Paul, yes. Scorabius LLC is Donnie Trotter. Oh, that's the the um yes, the lobbyist. You did tell tell me that. Thornton Township pays him five K month to lobby his protege, my his protege, my state senator, LG Sims, the chair of the Senate Appropriations Committee, uh. You know, see, that's where all our money goes. That's why we don't, that's why that's why we are being taxed out of our homes, you know? Goes to these people. That's what I can't stand. Uh Prince Reed donated Monica Gordon, more from Raja. Vista National, don't know what that is. Lynette Stokes again. Teachers Union, Robinson Engineering, now they do a lot of stuff. I've seen them. Friends of LG, LG Sims, Bronsville Law Group, Don Harmon. Don Harmon, twenty five hundred, ugh. Yeah, he's in it too. Oh, there's, I think we did we see that already? We saw it already, right? Kristen Gonzalez, eight thousand. Will Davis, Thaddeus Jones, Cal City Plumbing, The Entrance, that's in Harvey. He only gave five hundred, but still, that was probably a pay to play thing to Anthony McCaskill again. Meredith Hammer, Gregory T. Mitchell. Trying to see if I see something new. Terry Wells. Ah, there's Byron Stanley. I don't know if we saw him come up before four thousand. Okay, so it's a lot of the same people. There's Casey. Okay, I was gonna say, because she ran too, Casey Nesbit. I'm surprised we didn't see her name on there donating more, hmm. Bill's Voice Party, isn't that in Lansing, Paul? Uh Will Davis, Mary Kana Belcher did donate, um. Burnett Lawrence, she's on the two oh five school board. Kasparic again. Hmm, okay. Well, I hope that that was uh interesting. Was there anybody else that we uh? Did we look at Chris Gonzalez's? You know what? Let me put him in. I'm curious. As long as I'm still up. Oh, my God, it's eleven twelve. Christopher. I'll just say Chris Gonzalez. Uh, so this got ten dollars in there. Oh. No donations found. Okay, so maybe he didn't use that? Okay, in the past, he's run for alderperson, assessor and trustee. Donor, um. Oh, yeah, he's Christopher D. Gonzalez, right? Let me put that in there so we don't have this Christine Christopher. Hmm, but why isn't the money coming up or contributions? It's weird. It says it on the other page. Oh, 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 sorry, no, that was his committee giving to something else, because that's like when he gave eight thousand and in twenty twenty five. Ah, okay, okay. Yeah, I mean, so he you can see where he had paid in the past to, you know, Friends of Zuccarelli, Z Team, six thousand in two thousand eight. That must have been the price to get a position then, huh? Thornton Township Regular Democratic Organization, that was was the name of it under Frank, I think. Twenty twenty one, he gave thirty seven fifty. Oh, two times twenty twenty one to Frank Zuccarelli and then eight thousand to um Dots. Very interesting, you guys. Should we look at Casey Nesbit? Casey Nesbit. She didn't have a ton listed here. Hmm, okay. Yeah, not a lot. Anthony McCaskill donated to her earlier this year, so Jason, huh? Okay, so that shows that they're connected, which is not good. Did I forget anybody interesting? Okay, let me see. Paul says that each township trustee donate AK. You know, it almost looks that way, right? Who did I who did we forget? Uh, we saw Valerie. I for sure Valerie Mary did, Chris did. I think Byron did too. Almost all of them, but I didn't see Casey. Casey didn't. So that's why I'm like, I wonder what kind of deal, like, why didn't she have to pay AK? But yeah, maybe we could, maybe we should come on, Paul, and who else said that they would come? Let's go, oh, uh uh um Tim DeYoung on Facebook said he would come, like, let's go, let's go to the next meeting and be like, oh, so now we figured out you guys all paid AK for your job, so what are you getting for it? You paid AK for it, so what do you get out of it? You know, that's why they don't like me or Paul or people ask questions. You can't ask questions. Alright, guys. Well, that's it for tonight. Thanks for joining. Any other questions, comments, remarks, um? I don't know, I'll have to think about it. I want to file a police report tomorrow about that, but but yeah, they're up to shenanigans again, so you know what that means. We gotta nip that in the bud now. I said, what were they getting? Um, I broke. Oh, okay, yeah, yeah. You you looked up the D two's uh before on the queue? Yeah, I mean, it makes sense. I mean, I'm not surprised. I just I just hadn't looked at them in a while, so I I couldn't remember. I can't keep all this stuff straight in my head, you know, but it is it is fun. That's a fun website too. So if you guys want to go on that website and play around. So I wanted to go over that, um. That is uh Reform for Illinois is Sunshine Database, or if you just Google like Sunshine Illinois or Illinois Sunshine, it'll come up. I already knew what was going on. It's the same form, right? Like the pay to play, right? Because then the companies do it too. They pay and then they get the and then they get the um they get the contracts from the boards, yeah. Okay, guys. Well, I'm gonna go eat. I tell you eat dinner before? I can't remember if I ate dinner. Well, I'm hungry, so I'm gonna eat again. But thanks for joining me. Thank God I did not get uh beat up by by two elderly people tonight. They were trying to certify. Mary has that security company. Oh, yeah, yeah, okay, that's right. I remember somebody did tell me about that. Hmm, yeah, and all in the queue, you've done a lot of stuff on Dalton, so you probably know a lot more about the Dalton stuff. I haven't done this much on Dalton. My more my stuff's mostly on Harvey, but but that's good, you know, get that out there. Okay. Alright, guys, have a wonderful night and we will talk soon. Anything, any uh anything coming up tomorrow? Or let me see. Oh, shoot, I gotta get up because uh tomorrow. Harvey Housing Court is tomorrow. You know, the mayor uh the the mayor's always trying to Thanksgiving's Thursday, Happy Thanksgiving, Happy Early Thanksgiving. The mayor is always trying to give me tickets. So I have to go to Harvey Housing Court tomorrow. Thank you, all in the queue, you said. No, no, right, there's no me. Thanksgiving Thursday, take a break. Yes, I need a break, right? Um. Oh, I've been painting at my house and doing stuff too. It's like I don't really get a break, but you know, that's fine. We do different kinds of work. Uh, but but you would think that the city shut down, right? But you know, I haven't gotten any news that they're canceling Housing Court tomorrow. Clark's always trying to give me tickets that are bogus, so I have to go fight those tomorrow. Uh, tomorrow morning. I was gonna say I get to see his face, but he's not usually there. Usually Korean and um Ramona are there. All in the queue, you should research them. Korean Davis, Ramona Simpson, they're they're the the top two deputies for for the mayor. Because I know you love to do your research. You're good at that, um. They're involved in a lot of shady stuff too with Clark. And they but they rarely get any flack from it. They should they should get more flack. So. So, yeah, hopefully they won't try anything crazy tomorrow. Shoot, you mess it, okay. You look into it. Oh, yay, I know, I love it. We all have to stick together and work on this together. It's too much for for one or even two people to 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 do. There's just so much crap to sort through and organize and expose. It's it's so, there's so much of it. So it's nice nice when there are other people who are excited about this kind of stuff. I appreciate that. Alright, everybody, have a great night. Bon nuit, bonne soirée. I'm surprised French wasn't on tonight. Usually he's on, so on the queue, Paul, thanks for stopping in, um. And yeah, let's make a plan for the next meeting and the next township meeting, and hopefully there'll be enough people there. If I can go, I definitely will go. We'll make sure to be safe and watch out for for those aggressive uh um those aggressive elderly agents of the board. You never know what they're gonna do. So, good night for now.